For the Rhode Island Olivia Lake Lilian School District, Independent School District, number 2534. Just some housekeeping things tonight. Tracy Bookdahl cannot be here tonight. She had a family obligation. And John Desatell's name is on the list, but it's actually, Kim Desatell's just listening in. So if you see John's name, he unfortunately can't be here tonight because it sounds like his mother passed away. So our condolences to the Desatell family on that. But as it is seven o'clock and we have four board members present, I am going to call this meeting to order. Board members, if you would unmute yourselves, you should be able to now. So we're going to begin with the approval of our agenda.
I'll make that motion, Jill.
Motion is made by Sagatol.
Second Benson.
Seconded by Benson. And with the agenda, we have an addendum. If everybody got that. We have three items added to personnel. And I know two of them were in a previous email, but we had, I think we had an extra one. Dale, is that correct? There was another one added? He's not unmuted. So it's number, it'd be personnel. So it'll be adding number two, three, and four. So it'll be approve Trent Affman as a volunteer for the weight room. So that'll be number two. Number three is approve Patricia Sullivan as an elementary special education teacher for the 2020-2021 school year. And number four is approve Penny Christie as the fax teacher for the 2020-2021 school year. So those are the things that will be added to the agenda. So Melissa, you're still okay with approving it with those?
With those additions, yes.
Yes. Sandy?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Anything else that we need to discuss? For the approval of the agenda? Okay, hearing nothing, we will start with our roll call vote. We'll start with Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And I don't see Jeff yet, right? So. I am also an aye, so motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for, hopefully if you're able to watch this outside or participate in this outside, that would be the best because it's beautiful out. But we'll try to keep things moving along so you can go and enjoy your evening. But thank you for coming out and being part of this process. Public forum. Our public forum is placed on the agenda for regular board meetings. During this part of each regular school board meeting, up to 10 minutes of time will be allowed for district constituents to address the school board. Each person or topic may have up to two minutes of time. This is a time of listening by the board. So we are going to try to find my timer here. And if anybody would like to speak, what I'm going to do is ask you to unmute yourself and state your name. We will take five people. You'll each have two minutes of time. So if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself, state your name, and that will be the order that we will have people speak in. So if you're, and just let me know. How you can let me know if you can unmute. You should be able to, everybody should be able to unmute themselves. So. If anybody would like to speak, please unmute and state your name. Would anyone like to speak?
Chairman Jill?
Yes.
Neil Prokosh.
Okay, so Neil, let's see. Let, just give me one more minute to see if anybody else will want to speak and then, then you can have the floor, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for Neil for making sure that it actually, I'm like, I think you guys, you should be able to unmute yourselves. That's the, the setting is correct. So anyone else like to speak? All right, going once.
Jill, you might want to wait. I see that you have someone just being added right here.
All right. So if anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name. So far, we have one person, Neil. If anybody would like to speak. All right, we're gonna start off with Mr. Prokosh here. Your two minutes starts as soon as you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So I was just going to let you know I'm on the Rhode Island EDA, Economic Development Authority. And a group of concerned citizens put together a survey. And the EDA was gracious enough to pay for the postage in regard to that. The findings have come back. I believe that we received about 670 responses back out of 3,580. If the number is correct, it's just short of 19% that were returned to us by our, by our deadline. Lots of comments, lots of feedback. We only had about six questions. The findings, I believe, were going to be made available to the school district today. We had an EDA meeting at noon. And those findings are going to be provided to the school district with all the comments and answers to the questions. So just wanted to let people know that that was out there. And, and I thank you, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. All right. Short and sweet, we'll keep moving on, get you guys outside. So beginning with our consent items or continuing on with our consent items, we only need one motion to approve all the consent items unless anybody would like to pull anything off for, for any reason. But currently, our consent items, we're approving the bills for payment and approving the minutes of the June 22, 2020 regular school board meeting. So we will need a motion and a second to approve the consent items.
Oh, move Boleen.
Motion is made by Boleen.
Second Sagatol.
Okay, seconded by Sagatol. Any discussion or questions about any of the consent items? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote. And we will begin with Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Uh, I guess I'll say aye. I don't know.
Okay, it's the consent items, Jeff. It's approving the bills for payment and the minutes from the June 22 meeting.
All right.
Okay. All right. Melissa, did I get you now?
Aye.
Thank you. And I myself, I am an aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to personnel. Jeff, there were three additions to personnel. There was an addendum that was sent out before the meeting this afternoon. And I think I'll just, we'll just go through them and hopefully if you have any questions, you can ask them at that time. But personnel, number one, approve placing Margie Anna Timmons on leave effective August 7, 2020.
So move Sagatol.
By Sagatol.
Second Boleen.
Seconded by Boleen. Any questions or discussion? On this item? Hearing nothing, we will vote, starting with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye, motion carries. Number two under personnel is approve Trent Affman as a volunteer for the weight room. So just moved by Sagatol.
Second Benson.
Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. We will start with Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye, motion carries. Number three under personnel is approve Patricia Sullivan as an elementary special education teacher for the 2020-2021 school year. I will make that motion. Motion is made by Hanson.
Second Boleen.
Seconded by Boleen. Any questions or discussion on Ms. Sullivan?
Jill, I know that she, in the past, we, we did an addendum last year for the whole teaching license with the more qualified and we didn't get anything. Is she working towards getting a degree?
Mr. Bransoy or Mr. Menton? Or actually, Mr. Benson, the elementary?
She is not working towards a degree at the moment, though.
Does she have intentions on doing it or not?
We've talked about that a little bit. But she hasn't, nothing's come about it yet.
Is there, is there a way we can pursue looking for somebody else in the process if she doesn't move on it?
I, I think she's, the where she's at right now, she has one more year of that she can go like she is right now. And I think she'll be considering that. But at this moment, she hasn't pursued it anymore. Each year, we need to advertise for the position. And, and so we go through that process and we have to, we have listed as an opening this year. And it has to open for 60 days. And if we do not receive a qualified candidate to fill that position, then we can offer the contract. And that's what we did.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing no other questions, we will vote. And we will start with Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie? Jeff?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye, motion carries. Number four, approve Penny Christie as the fax teacher for the 2020-2021 school year. I heard Jeff. So there was Jeff. And who wants to take the second?
I can second, Jill. Sagatol.
Motion is made by Benson, seconded by Sagatol. I believe Penny's situation is similar to Patricia's in so far as she is not licensed, but I don't know what her status is. Mr. Menton maybe can speak to that if, if that's a question for anyone.
She is currently working on her, her licensure. She's working with, I believe it's Mancito State. And so she's working on that.
All right, any other questions anyone has? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote. And we will begin with Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye, motion carries. All right, moving on from personnel, we get to our superintendent's report. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bransoy.
Okay, just to mention that I did receive the summary from the EDA survey from the Rhode Island EDA. And, but I don't think it's my position to comment without a presentation of the survey by them and give them an opportunity to analyze it. So, but we did receive it and we'll be in contact with them. So thank you. And my first item is the facilities report. Just to let you know that the office and the classrooms are all finished and ready for staff. We're doing a lot of modifications to work with the COVID situation. The bathrooms are modified to meet COVID-19 guidelines. The water fountains are set for the bottle fill only. And students will be asked to bring their own water bottles for personal use if they return to the building. And so all those things, we're taking into account. And with the facilities, we're ending a lot of expenditures dealing with COVID-19. And so we're really concerned about that. But our goal is to make the, if the students didn't do come back or when they do come back, we want to make sure that it's a safe environment for our students. So, so we're working with that, with staffing and, and making everything, all rooms are disinfected on a regular basis as well as the restrooms and all that. So it really is meaning a lot of more additional work with our custodial staff. And so we're trying to iron all that out. Plus with the cooks and, and the additional work there. So a lot of work is going in and it's been a quick summer. And so here we're almost to August. So, and we still not sure what's going to happen. B is the reopening of the school year. We had a work session with the board prior to this board meeting tonight. The purpose of it was to review the planning that administrators and the staff have been working on. And so we reviewed several documents and an action plan listing the several tasks to be discussed and reviewed and assigned to different groups to complete. Topics covered were, were district items, instructional, wellness, school operation, facilities, activities, community education, technology, and communications. Were all areas that are listed that we're looking at. So the three scenarios proposed by the State Department were reviewed and discussed with, with in-person learning of all students, hybrid learning, and distant learning, which are the three, three scenarios that the state has put out. List of questions that need to be answered in the near future when the final decision is made, were, was reviewed with the board and they have a copy of those questions and such. And so a lot to be looking at. The governor on Thursday, this Thursday, July 30, is supposed to be making that recommendation of what, what we will be doing come to the fall. And what needs to drive this decision is the safety and well-being of our students and staff. So we went through that, spent an hour with summarizing all that and bringing the board up to where we're at. And, and so it's, we're going through some times that we've never been before. So we're asking everybody to have patience. And when the governor makes that decision, we'll start making those decisions and having meetings and getting out to you. C is MSBA Summer Seminar. As you noticed, this year, it's, it's a little different than it has been. It's by virtual and virtually in August, over three evenings. So if you're interested, take a look at the journal from the July and August Journal, MSBA Journal. And if interested in participating in the seminar is a contact Joy. And she'll make the registration requirements for you and get the information out to you. But read, there's a summary of all the sessions that they're going to have and looks quite interesting. Access and Inclusion Matters Throughout COVID-19 and Beyond is the title of their summer seminar. So if interested, let Jill know. Your joy. The audit will be starting August 10 through the 14th. The auditors will be here, going through the records and collecting information for the district audit, which usually comes back hopefully in by November. So that'll be undergoing, starting August 10. And so election notice, filing dates for election in the school board has been posted. The period of filing affidavits for candidacy begins July 28 and closes at four o'clock on August 11. And there is, currently, there's five or four positions for the board that will, that are terms are up and are for election. So please, if interested, come on in and registers. And so that's all I've got for right now. If there's any questions you have, we can ask them.
Any questions from the board? All right. Okay, Jeff?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Is there any update you were talking about, Dale?
Pardon?
Are we keeping track of those extra expenses in case we get something from COVID for it or not?
We're collecting all of them. And, and so, yes. And we did get additional funding through the CARES Act in June, end of June, which went to expenditures for the spring. And so, but now we're looking at what we're going to have additional staffing and needs for the start of the school year. So definitely, that's all being kept secret. And any grant that's available, we'll apply for it. And so, so we'll see. But it's gonna, it's gonna be expensive. And so we need to keep track of all those and, and see what. I'm hoping that the governor with his decision on Thursday, I would like to have him also give some, an opportunity for some funding, whether it's federal or state for schools because of the expenditure. When you just think of, you know, just a prime example is transportation when supposedly you can only have, carry 10 to 12 on a bus, on a, on a regular bus. And so transporting kids is going to be quite an expenditure. And then all the safety things that we're doing, the extra, extra things we're doing for the buildings and for kids and staff, it all is, is going to add up. So, so we'll keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, moving on to our elementary principals report. There, there is not a physical report, but I was just going to give Mr. Benson an opportunity if anybody had any questions or if he had anything he wanted to offer. Now would be the time.
I don't have much to offer, just kind of waiting on the report to, to figure out what we can actually do. I mean, we've been working with our staff quite a bit here lately to get everything, or some ideas in place, I guess. But without that report, we can't move forward too much yet.
All right, any questions for Mr. Benson? All right, move on to Mr. Menton, same idea. If Mr. Menton has anything to offer or if any of the board has any questions for him.
I don't have anything extra. We've been meeting a lot and just trying to make sense of what may or may not happen in September.
All right, activities report. Again, there isn't a report and I don't think Mr. Flann is with us tonight. So if you have any questions for Mr. Flann, he probably as well is, is waiting for the state to give us some idea of what we're going to do. But I'm sure he would answer an email or, or a phone call. So please reach out to him. Number five, school board committee reports. I, I don't know if really anybody's been meeting, but if anybody has anything to offer on the school board side for any committee reports or anything that they have found useful, this would be the time to speak up, school board. Anyone? All right, we are going to move on to the pool board report, which was included in the packet. Tracy is not with us, but. Jeff, did you guys, have you met? Or is this just? Jeff Benson, have you met as a pool board?
Oh, we did, but I can't remember what it was.
Okay, so you have met since our last meeting?
It was a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
And really, we didn't go over much. Basics is what we went over.
Okay.
You got it for it, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, we've got the report. And the pool did reopen kind of with a surprise, basically a surprise reopening on June 15. And they, I know just from conversations with Tracy, they're just trying to take it slow, you know, and make sure that they're following all the guidelines to keep everybody, you know, safe and, and keep the pool open for use. So Tracy's contact info is on here. If you have any further questions for her, please give her a, contact her. So, all right, moving on to new business. And I'm gonna let Mr. Bransoy take this one away. It's the presentation of school survey results by Sue Peterson of School Perceptions LLC.
The results of our school survey, which was intended to go out in March and ended up with, with COVID-19. That we weren't able to get it out in the time we wanted, but we did get it out in June. And the results are back now. And we have Sue Peterson joining us by Zoom from School Perceptions, who put this survey together. And I just want to share a few thoughts that I've, I have from it is that we're thankful to all of Bold residents who participated in our survey. The district, we received 674 completed surveys. And for a mail-out survey, that's a fantastic response. So it was good to see that many people interested and want to be part of the discussion. And so the results of the survey gives us some great insights and shares with us what work needs to be done. We're, overall, our community believes our buildings need investments. 58% of respondents gave the district positive marks for promoting high-quality education. And this one doesn't surprise me, an overwhelming 83% believe face-to-face learning is the best way to deliver instruction. And that one, I think, is really after our experience last spring. And we found out, you know, how important face-to-face is. So, so we have, take that into account. And 69% believe that updating our school buildings is an important part of delivering the quality of education. And so we continue, we must continue seeking input from the community to create the best long-term plan for our district. If there's one thing we want to take away from this survey is this. The people in Bold are committed to improving our schools. They want to be involved in the plan we develop. And we need to take the time to listen carefully to their ideas. And I encourage the board to work together, share information we have learned about our buildings, and engage people from all of our communities in our plan for the future. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sue. And we welcome Sue to tonight's meeting and look forward to sharing the results of the survey. And go ahead, Sue.
All right, thank you. So which screen of mine are you seeing?
We're seeing the community survey results, Bold School District Summer 2020.
All right, good, good.
You're on.
Let me get this guy running. There we go. All right. Good evening, okay. So as Dale said, I think my assignment for tonight is to go through the data. It's important to me that you understand the data and then you'll be able to continue some conversations after our time together tonight regarding next steps. Just a reminder who we are. We've been doing this since 2002. And our goal really and mission as a company hasn't changed, but we want to help educational leaders like yourselves gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. So we conducted your survey in July of this year. All residents within the district were mailed that paper survey. It had a unique survey access code on it to ensure data integrity. So we know that folks could take the survey once and only once. You had a survey response of 713 people completed the survey. Of those, 347 mailed the paper survey back to our home office in the Slinger, Wisconsin. And we've got folks that entered those in. So you had a participation rate of 31%. So we had folks enter some in late last week even that were still traveling through the mail. So a 31% response rate, definitely an excellent response rate. Remember, the survey has two purposes. One is to educate, the second is to gather data. So our research over nearly the last 20 years has said that if 31% of the households that got the survey responded to the survey, equally as many got the survey and put their hands on it and had some sort of relationship with the district. So in essence, likely 60% of your residential households, you touched in some way. So absolutely excellent. There's something about little communities in Minnesota, they like to take surveys. So we typically will see about a 20% response rate. You were sitting at 31. We asked folks who took the survey to tell a bit about themselves. This allows us to slice and dice the data in a variety of ways. It also allows us to look at the data and analyze it according to what happens in a typical election. So what I mean by that is we know the voting habits of people based on their age. We know that US Census data would tell us that in a typical community, 16% of the people are over the age of 65. You can see that your survey responses, you're 65 and older, are overrepresented in the people that responded to the survey. That's okay, because what do we know about the voting habits of folks over the age of 65? They never miss a chance to go to the polls. So we want those respondents to be overrepresented. We want to make sure those who respond to the survey live in the district. 6% of those who responded to the survey don't live in live in the district. We'll remove those 6%. So you'll hear me talk about resident respondents. So you may be thinking to yourself, well, if this was mailed out to every household, who would get the survey that doesn't live in the district? So all employees had the opportunity to complete the survey, as did all parents of school-aged kids. It's likely you have people that work for you that don't live in the school district, as well as the fact that you may have parents that don't live in the district. So again, those folks will be removed. We asked folks to tell us what municipality it is that they live in. Again, we want to make sure everyone is represented. We also want to make sure that the data is rep, oops, is representative of what happens in an election. So as we look at this, we wanted to say, how does that correlate with what would happen in a typical election as far as responses or the number of people that vote? And I think Dale, we talked about this data last week. And I think your team told us that last time there was an election, was it 24% of the votes came from the city of Bird Island? And we were nearly on the money at 45% in the city of Olivia. Was that correct?
Yes.
All right. So again, we can see that our data is representative. So that's important. We wanted to be able to pull out data and look at the folks that own ag land. 30% of those who responded to the survey reported that they own ag land in the school district. 12% of those who responded to the survey are school district employees, or 85% of those who, or 85 of the folks who responded were your employees. 262 of the respondents have children that attend school in your district, or 38% of all of those who responded. Then we said to folks, if you've got school-aged kids, what school is it that they attend? Half of the parents had kids in the elementary school, 47% at the high school, 16% said they've got kids early childhood, 15% in the private school. And as you can see, small percentage are making other educational choices for their children. We also wanted to make a connection for survey respondents, that if they don't work for the district or they don't currently have kids involved, but they may have some sort of relationship with the district. So as you can see here, folks could choose other ways that they're connected to the school system. 51% said that they've already had kids graduate from the district. 46% said they're graduates themselves. We didn't used to ask if there were grandparents, but what we found was grandmas and grandpas would write up the side of the survey, hey, I'm a grandparent. So now we ask if you're a grandparent or relative, which was 35% of those who responded. 15% don't yet have kiddos, but will at some point, likely in the district. 10% reported that they volunteer in your schools. We asked some questions regarding overall district feedback. I like to call this the pulse of the people. We want to just get a sense of what people think about the work that the school district is doing, because we know that there's a correlation between people thinking that the district's doing a good job and the likelihood of them supporting a referendum. So as you can see here, we've separated your data for the first time into three mutually exclusive groups. So you can only fall into one. We've got your staff members, then we've got parents who are not staff members, and then we have general citizens. So a group we call your non-parent, non-staff. Those non-parent, non-staff, they make up the majority of your community and they're the least connected to you. So much of what they respond to is just what they hear, their perceptions based on what they see in the community, based on the schools. But they're not in the schools and, you know, don't have kids anymore in the school system. So these numbers are a simple average. If everyone had said great, you'd see a four. If everyone said poor, you would see a one. So now I've ranked it according to that group that makes up the majority of the community. And what had the highest rating from those folks was delivering a high-quality educational experience. And then second, providing that safe learning environment. That one down at the bottom, maintaining school facilities. So that guy's leaning towards a poor. Between that two and one with the average, which is why we're having this conversation tonight, right? That there's a need to do some work in your school. So address some of those. So it sounds like as a board, you're on the right track, that that's where some attention is needed. We asked one overall satisfaction question. Overall, how satisfied are you with the Bold School District? As you can see here, 8% are saying very satisfied, 48% satisfied, and then 33% are reporting either not satisfied or very unsatisfied, with 11% reporting no opinion. So some work to do there on just connecting with the community, making sure that they know what's going on in the daily happenings and the good things happening in your schools each and every day. We also wanted to just do a little touch point of how do people feel that the district is doing, given the pandemic? Because certainly we changed things up come March when the things changed. And we want to just get a sense of how the community feels that you did. So again, a simple average here, if everyone said strongly agree, you'd see a five. If they said strongly disagree, you would see a one. Again, we've separated it into those three mutually exclusive groups. And certainly you can see here, your community is giving you a nod that indeed, things are going well and that they felt that you, the district, did a nice job delivering face-to-face, you know, they do feel is the most effective way to deliver instruction. I think we all do. That's why you have school buildings. But that the district did a quality job of transitioning to that distance learning when that was the safest thing for students and staff. So the survey, as I said, has two purposes. One is to educate, the other is to gather data. So we know that the district has some operational funding challenges and that we need to look for new ways to create operational efficiencies. The district also underwent a district facility assessment that looked at each of your buildings. So as we can see from that assessment, we wanted to let people know that there were $17.2 million in needs that were updated at your, identified at your elementary school, $17.6 million at the high school. We listed what those needs really were broadly. And we said that, okay, we could invest $34.8 million to our two schools, but that would only address the needed infrastructure and maintenance, and it wouldn't address making any updates to classrooms to improve those educational inadequacies. So we, we also wanted to let folks know that you've got some excess capacity. So you're only using small amounts of space in both of those buildings. And really, if we're going to address these needs, we dropped the R-word, okay? So the way we would do that is through that bond referendum. So we said to folks, would, would you, would you support the district exploring a bond referendum to address our school's facility need? And as you can see here, 48% of all resident respondents, so I've removed those folks that don't live in the district, so those folks that can't vote in the district. So 48% are saying, yep, we do think that the district should explore a bond referendum. 27% are telling us no, with 25% at this point in the survey saying they're not sure that they need more information. You're also going to see that we've separated the data into those three mutually exclusive groups again. The reason we do that is if we only look at the blue bar, that blue bar is overrepresented of parents and staff. So what I mean by that is this, if I was sitting outside of a polling place in your district at the school district election and folks were leaving the polls, and I asked them the question, do you work for the school district or do you have school-aged children? What I would find out is that only 1% of the people that leave the polls are school district employees. About 25% of people that leave the polls are parents of school-aged children. What does that tell us? That tells us that that purple bar, the non-parent, non-staff, those general citizens, they make up about 75% of the people at the polls. But statistically, that blue bar has more staff and parents. So again, we kind of, we look at that blue bar and say, we've got a nod to go ahead and look at a referendum. But we really want to look and say, okay, when we look at our general citizens, they're somewhat split. There's a leaning towards yes, and really a quarter of those folks are telling us we need more information. So an opportunity to educate. And certainly with COVID this spring and into the summer, not a lot of being able to connect with people existed. So then we wanted to let folks know that we had some facility options. We're really at a crossroad. Then we need to decide how we're going to invest in your buildings. So one option is to continue to keep those existing two schools, that you could make that 38, $34.8 million investment and address the infrastructure and maintenance at both of those schools. That's not going to address your educational inadequacies, and it's not going to allow the district to really improve those operational efficiencies. That would help balance the budget. So you did approve an operating levy, but you'd need additional funds should you not reduce other costs by looking at different ways of perhaps taking a building offline. So that was option one. The other option was option two, that you could replace both schools with a new pre-K through 12th grade school. So that's going to cost us $45.5 million. And that would consolidate all of your operations to one location. That's going to allow you some operating efficiencies by having all of your staff in one place. So we said to folks, which option is it that you support? So 37% of those general citizens are saying, continue to invest in that existing school. 34% of those folks are saying, let's replace both schools with a new pre-K through 12th grade school. But when you look at your staff and your parents, so those who are most impacted, most connected to the needs of the school, you can see a pretty strong leaning towards option two. So 45% of those who responded to the survey are saying, yep, option two. But we can see here that of the folks that make up the majority of folks at the polls, nearly an even split. So just that 3% there with 29% now saying, all right, I've heard both options, but I do need more information. So we've got a lot of people that, that aren't willing to, you know, put their, put their money down yet to say which direction they would go. So we also knew that you had a partnership opportunity that was quite unique for the district, that you would be able to partner with Health Partners, Olivia Hospital and Clinic. And that would add some additional space. It would provide space for both school and community use. It would also reduce the cost of building that new school by a million dollars, as well as provide you with that 37,000 additional square feet of space that could be used for academic purposes. So we said to folks, all right, given this opportunity, would you support the district partnering with Health Partners, Olivia Hospital and Clinic? So you can see here, 43% of all of the respondents are saying, yep, that seems like a good idea. 20% are saying no. 19% of all those who are responding are saying it's irrelevant, because I don't support a new school. 18% are saying, not sure, need more information. So again, if we split that data apart and look at those three mutually exclusive groups, those folks most connected to it, closest to it, your staff and your parents, they're saying, yeah, this is a real benefit. We do support that. Your general citizens, 35% of those are saying, yep, I'm in, that does make sense. And you can continue to see, you've got people saying, you know, a nice group there that's saying, I just need more information. So certainly that is a theme we can see, that you've got a group that I do think that COVID and that ability to connect with people has been impacted by, you know, being able to have some community meetings and let folks know what's going on. But in essence, a leaning towards, yep, we do certainly appreciate and like the idea of the partnership. Then we also knew that you had the opportunity to build an auditorium. Should we build a new school? You could further expand it, add an auditorium that would have seating for 500 people, some additional features. That would cost an extra $6 million. And so now here you can see, 36% of all those who responded said yes, 29% no. So that guy's a little tighter. 12, 21% are saying, I don't support the new school. And 14% not sure, need more information. Again, those closest to it, your staff and parents, they see the benefit of that. Your general citizens, kind of, you know, split three ways, 26% saying yes, a leaning of 32% no, 29% saying at this point, I don't support the new school, 13% of those general citizens saying, I'm going to need some more information. At the end of the day, it comes down to one thing, it always does, it comes down to money. So we wanted to let folks know that this really was an ideal time for the district to consider this. We know you've got some facility needs. We know that there's a need for some operating efficiencies. Interest rates are near historic lows. And you as a district will really benefit from the May 2019 passing of that ag to school property tax relief bill. In fact, you can see here that your state aid and partnership would cover 58.75% of that bond. All right? So really, the district is responsible for 41% of the project. We let folks know that based on the property or properties, what their tax increase would be. So we represented that 34.8, like, let's just take care of infrastructure and maintenance, the $44.5 million to build the new pre-K through 12th grade school with the partnership, and then adding the auditorium onto that new school. So this is what I call the mind-numbing chart. So I want to make sure that you understand how to read this. So if I focus my attention on that bottom bar where we look at all residents, you can see that 30% of the resident respondents said that they'd support the new school with the hospital partnership and with the auditorium. So a $50.5 million bond is what they'd be in at. 13% said they'd support the $44.5 million. So they're in for everything, but perhaps that auditorium needs to wait. So I make an assumption that since the tax increase for the $44.5 million bond is less than the increase at the $50.5 million bond, that I can bring those folks along with. So in essence, when I look at that bottom bar, I say that 43% of the survey respondents who live in the district would support the $44.5 million bond. I've got to get to the 50% mark to have success, right, or to consider a majority. And so I, it looks like I would need to tap into that 34.8 million, or in essence, that's really where your community's tax tolerance is. But as I've already said, the all residents is overrepresented of your parents and staff. So in essence, you need to look at each of those bars independently and say, okay, where are each of those groups? Your staff who live in the district, extremely supportive. So you've got majority support from your school district employees for the whole project, building the new school, the partnership with Health Partners, as well as building the auditorium. But we know that staff make up a very small percentage of folks that go to the polls. Your parents, extremely supportive as well, but not all the way. So your parents are saying, yep, based on that tax increase, and perhaps let's do what we can and we can add that auditorium on later. Your parents are saying, we're in at that 40. Your parents are saying, we're in at that forty-four-point-five-million-dollar project. Your general citizens, those folks least connected to you, you can see that that tax impact, in essence, is impacting their decision here. So you've got about thirty-four percent support at that forty-four-point-five-million-dollar mark. Twelve percent of those folks are saying, I like the idea of just keeping that, those existing schools and doing the minimum, you know, just doing the infrastructure and maintenance. Ten percent are saying they would support even a smaller bond referendum. You are sitting with twenty percent of those folks there, your general citizens, that are, that haven't made up their mind yet, so they need more information. There's an opportunity for them to be influenced or to become educated and make a decision and say, okay, I see that this would be valuable, and they would likely move to the, one of the levels of support. And you continue to sit at that twenty-four percent of folks saying, I am not interested in supporting any bond referendum. So at this point, you've got some support. I'd call it, you know, you've got your warm, as far as support for building the new school. Your citizens are telling you, yep, they indeed need something, and that they see the value in doing something. But at this point, I'd be cautious and say, you know, there's support, but you're going to need to continue to engage and connect with your community in these next steps. And so with that, I'm going to pause and ask Dale, I don't know if Ryan's on as well or any of the other partners, Dale, if you want to add anything, or open it up for board members for comment or question.
Are there any board members that would like to ask you a question?
Yeah. Go ahead, Melissa.
I was just wondering, will we receive a copy of this?
Yep. I had asked Dale not to send it in advance of tonight, because I wanted to make sure you all understood how to kind of look at each of those mutually exclusive groups. And I'm, so I'm going to send him, as soon as we're done, I'll send him this updated draft, and he can send it out to you. We also encourage you to post it on your website, as we did share in the opening letter of the survey for transparency, that you should put it there as well.
We plan on posting it on our website tomorrow, so that should be available on there. But then I will, as soon as Sue sends the copy of this, I will send it out to all the board members.
Wonderful, thank you.
So I think we missed some of the residents of the district. I got calls saying that they didn't get the survey. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, we heard that there were some folks that said they didn't get the survey. In some cases, you know, a postal issue will happen. The district, you know, we did have extra copies that were available at the district office. I think when folks called in, as they were instructed to do, if they didn't receive one, that then they were mailed out a paper survey. So, you know, does that happen, that there's a newer neighborhood, or for some reason? Rarely. Sometimes we find, when folks say they didn't get one, then you show them what the survey looks like, and they go, oh, yep, I, I might have tossed that. Is it possible that a particular neighborhood, for some strange reason, was missed? That could happen. I think all of, you know, people that did contact the district were, provided a survey, so if they contacted you, hopefully, contacted the district. The other thing I would say is this, while everyone's input is important, remember, a survey has two purposes. One is to educate, the other is to gather data. Based on the survey responses that we have and the number of responses, if people continue to take the survey, and they should, and like, if you still have people, we could still take their data and update your report for you. But statistically, the needle just isn't going to move a whole lot, okay? So you've got seven-hundred-plus responses in, so if you just think of sheer statistics, the data isn't going to change, maybe one percent if that.
Okay, thank you.
Sue, I have another question. You know, the, the twenty percent that have not made up their mind yet, what have you seen other districts do to connect or engage to, you know, get one way or the other for them to make a decision?
Yeah, so at this point, you know, it really comes down to continuing to share the needs. You know, everyone has a right then to make their decision of, am I no altogether, or, you know, should we, option one or option two? COVID makes that interesting, certainly. But I think some Zoom meetings, using FaceTime Live, people are on social media as ways to connect. I think it's a matter of, what are the questions folks have that haven't been answered? So making sure that you can find, you know, opportunities to connect, so people can, can share it, like, here's the reason I'm still on the fence. So, you know, FaceTime Live allows that to happen, Zoom meetings allow that to happen. Obviously, if we weren't in the pandemic, face-to-face meetings and going out and connecting with small groups of people is always beneficial.
Thank you.
Maybe I can add to that, if it's okay, Dale. Melissa, you know, we, we did just launch, I shouldn't say just launch, we did launch a little bit ago that, the website. You know, if, if residents go to your district website, we have a link on there to, to facilitate this information. So, you know, we wanted to do that, to make sure that this is now a continual place, that people can go to find information, and we'll use that as a resource in the future, for sure. Just to let you know, also, Jeff, we did have columns and social media posts and newspaper editorials that all mentioned the survey and to fill the survey out. So we tried to use every avenue possible to let people know that the survey was there, and if they, that information, if you, again, if you went back to the website, would say, if you didn't get a survey, to, you know, call the officer or School Perceptions to get one mailed out, or fill it out online. So, you know, like Sue said, it's not, it can't be perfect, but with the great response that we got, a thirty-one percent, and plus, you know, trying to get to everybody that we could to let them know that the survey was out there, not to mention all the board meetings that we talked about it coming up, you know, hopefully, hopefully, people weren't surprised that it was out and, and got to voice their opinion.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments?
Dale, would it be possible for us to follow up with a work session? I know it was mentioned a little bit in your report, just so we could dissect this and just discuss it further as a board?
I would like to do that, then, and I've talked to Ryan about this. I'd like to include Ryan with that discussion. And, and I think, yes, I think it'd be very important now for you to let this, digest some of this, and they're going to come with lots of questions. I think there's a lot of data here that is good. And so I think, you know, with the survey, it's not, part of the intent is to give us direction. And so with collecting this data, I think it's good, a lot of good data here. Now, I think the big thing that jumps out at me is, is if residents feel disconnected, and, and that isn't surprising, I think, with the distant learning that we've just been going, going through, and so the feel of everybody being housed in and not out about as much. And so that's probably a typical feeling with the crisis we're going through right now. But, but I do think it's, I look at a survey as saying, you know, giving us some direction, and, and what are the majority of the people leaning towards? And so what you're seeing is, yes, I, I think we should schedule one, and I think it should be very soon. And, and talking with Ryan, he's available next Monday night. And so if you want to check your calendars, we could set a tentative work session, that's always best for Jeff, I know, and schedule it on a Monday evening, if that would, would fit you. So I think it would be, and to do it quickly, I think shortly, to give us some feedback on where we want to go. So, so I would recommend that, that would be up to you people to want to schedule that. I'll give it to Jill to make that decision. But I think, you know, there's a lot of good data in here, and, and I think the people of the district are saying we need to improve our sites, and I think that's so true. And, and I think some of the things that Ryan have taken us through in the last couple of years now has been a real eye-opener. And, and so I think it's easy to point the finger at someone or something and, and accept that. And so I think I would encourage you, as a board, to individually take a process, go through this, and I'm available, Ryan's available, Sue, and, and when you have questions, and we'll try and get some answers. But like she said, a survey is an opportunity to educate ourselves, and, and that's important. And so I think we see the support for a building. And so we need to look at how can we engage the community better, and some other things we can pull from the survey. So, yes, I think we should schedule.
Sounds good.
I think you should be very proud, you've got six-hundred-and-seventy-four completed surveys.
Seventeen. Dale, I actually was, we had more come in since you saw, so, yes, seven-eighteen, I think, what's the new number?
Oh, wow. And from what I gather from people that have done the surveys or written form, that's, that's extremely positive. So, so that's good. Okay.
Very good. Anything else for Sue or Dale? All right, thank you.
Sue, we thank you, and for all your work. It's not easy to do, and so we thank you for that, then. Again, I encourage the board to look at, let's work together, let's share information, let's do what's best for our students. If we keep our focus there, that makes our decision-making easier. And so I think it's been kind of maybe a, a tough night to look at all this. We're spending an hour talking about where we're headed this fall, and now this, we spent an hour on the survey, and so, wow, a lot of information in a short time. So, so Jill, I'll turn it back to you, and I would, I would encourage you to take a look at next Monday evening, if that is a possibility.
Yeah, why don't we talk about that during upcoming dates?
Okay.
Maybe discuss that and go from here. Right now, we are going to approve a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election, which, being a resolution, I will be reading it to you. So I will try to make it as painless as possible. Resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election, be resolved by the school board of independent school district number twenty-five thirty-four, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, it is necessary for the school district to hold this general election for the purpose of electing four school board members for terms of four years each. The clerk shall indicate, shall include on the ballot the names of the individuals who file affidavits of candidacy on said general election during the period of filling, of filing such affidavits, as though they have been included by name in this resolution. Going to admit somebody to the meeting here, all right. The clerk shall not include the ballots, on the ballot, the names of individuals who file timely, who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. Number two, general election is hereby called and elected to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the third day of November 2020. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A, point eleven, the precinct and precincts and polling places for this general election are those polling places and precincts, or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. Voting hours of those polling places shall be the same as for the state general election. Number four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said general election to be provided to the county auditor of each county, and the school district is located in whole or in part, at at least seventy-four days before the date of said election. The notice shall include the date of said general election and the office or offices to be voted on at said general election. The clerk is hereby authorized to direct and directed to cause notice of said general election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least ten days before the date of said general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said general election, and to cause a sample ballot to be posted on, in each polling place on election day. The sample ballot shall not be printed on the same colored papers as an official ballot. Sample ballot for a polling place must reflect the offices handled and rotation sequence on the ballots used in that polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The notice of election so posted and published shall seat the offices be filed set forth in the form of ballot below, and said, and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. The clerk authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posed, posted in each polling place on election day. Number five, the clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this election, and generally to cooperate within the election authorities conducting other elections on that date. Clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such action as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering the, into agreement, agreements or understandings with appropriate election officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. Number six, the clerk is further authorized and directed to cause, or to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instruction as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system. We have the school district ballot, independent school district number twenty-five thirty-four, bowl, general election, the date, November third, 2020. Instructions to voters, to vote, completely fill the ovals, next year choices, like this, fill the noble. School board member, vote for up to four, and I, they probably will list as many candidates as, it says candidate one through eight, and four write-ins, but I'm sure if we have twenty people, they'll probably all be on the ballot. So optical scan ballots must be printed in black ink on white material, except that marks to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment, may be printed in any other color ink, in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable information identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate, indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot, so that the judge's initials are visible and the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. Number seven, the name of each candidate for office at this election shall be rotated with the names of other candidates for the same office in the manner specified by Minnesota, in Minnesota law. Number eight, if the school district will be contracting to print the ballots for this election, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions to the printer for layout of the ballot. Before contract, contract in excess of a thousand dollars is awarded for printing ballots, the printer shall furnish, in accordance with Minnesota Statute, Section 204D, point zero four, a sufficient bond, letter of credit, or certified check acceptable to the clerk in any amount not less than a thousand dollars. or certified check acceptable to the clerk in any amount not less than $1,000 conditioned on printing the ballots in conformity with the Minnesota election law and the instructions delivered. The clerk shall set the amount of the bond, letter of credit, or certified check in an amount equal to the value of purchase. And finally, number nine, even year. The individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for this election at various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judge, judges, the election judges shall act as clerks of the election, count the ballots cast, and submit them to the school board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. All right, with all that, resolution, we need a motion and a second to approve.
One more, Boleen.
Was made by Boleen.
Second, Sagatow.
Seconded by Sagatow. Any questions or discussion on any of that? Hearing nothing, we will vote. I'm sorry, that was a little funny. I don't, it's long, but it's necessary. We will start with Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, number three, designation of identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. This is an action item. The Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts annually designate identified official with authority to comply with the State Access Control Security Standards 1.0, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external, external users access to MDE security system for their local education agency. The superintendent recommends the board authorize Dale Bransoy to access the identified official with authority to the Bold Public Schools Number 2534.
Seconded all.
Motion is made by Sagatow. I will second that, seconded by Hanson. Any questions about that or comments? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number four, approve Conway, Doof, and Schmusing, P L L P, to provide our audit service for the
So, more Benson.
All right, for the year ending June 30th, 2020. And motion is made by Benson. Jeff.
Second, Sandy.
Seconded by Sandy. Any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five, approve the long-term facilities maintenance program update. This is enclosure number two, and I will look to Mr. Bransoy to point out to us what is different. You're on mute, Dale.
I didn't want you to hear me. This is LTFM, this is the program, it's 10-year plan. And again, it's, you're kind of drawing straws when you put this together, especially with with our billings and expenditures of repairs and such. So but it does string it out to 10 years for Denny and and the board here, Facilities Committee, to revising as as needed. And so but as you can see, there's not a lot of revenue in that fund. So it really limits the amount of general maintenance we can do. And and that's not anything new. So that's something that the district has struggled with over the years and that will continue. So but but it is a 10-year plan. Again, we update it as as we go.
All right, I'll make that motion.
All right, motion is made by Sagatow.
Second, Boleen.
Okay, seconded by Boleen. Any questions or discussion from anyone? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote and we will begin with Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number six, set the 2020-2021 admission prices for school, the school musical. Students grade K through 12, single ticket $4, adult single ticket $6. There's no change, it's been that way for a while, so.
So, more Boleen.
Motion is made by Boleen.
Second, Benson.
Seconded by Benson. Sandy, any discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number seven, set the 2021 band rental, band instrument rental fees. Instruments, 5 through 12, $50, percussion bells, synthesizer, fifth and the sixth, 12, seventh and eighth, 20, ninth through 12, 25. Collected fees. Fee proceeds will be placed in the general fund and will be used for future repair of district instruments. This also is not a change, it's been these prices for a long time, so.
Second.
Motion is made by Sandy Benson, and I will second that. And any discussion or questions on any of that? All right, hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll start with Jeff.
Yeah, aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number eight, approve the elementary student handbook, which I just realized we don't have as enclosures.
They were, both these, these hand
They're online.
Okay. Books will be on the website, that's where they're at.
And we did, did we look at these prior?
We received, Joy sent them to us.
Oh, yeah, they did, she did. Saw them somewhere.
Yeah, they were, they were attached to Google.
All right, all right, sorry. I couldn't remember if I had read it, like, you know, in a previous year, because I, I'm sure I did. But I also, I also looked at it when she sent it to us, so sorry about that. All right, so.
Are there any major changes?
Mr. Benson.
No major changes, just updating the lunch prices, basically.
Okay. All right, maybe be comfortable making that motion.
So, more Boleen.
All right, motion is made by Boleen.
Seconded Sagatow.
Seconded by Sagatow. Any, any further discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll start with Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number nine, approve the junior senior high student handbook as sent online. So same thing, if Mr. Menton, if there was anything other than lunch prices that changed?
No, I I put some language right at the beginning in the introduction, just saying, this handbook is subject to change due to COVID-19 concerns. You know, we know that there's going to be some things that we have to do that aren't in the handbook, most likely going to be closing lunch down because we're not going to be able to have kids leaving the building and coming back in. And so we'll, but we'll play it by ear.
Okay. I will make that motion if somebody wants to second that.
I'll second it.
Sandy.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion or questions on that?
Just real quick, Mr. Menton, very minor change on page 24, just the dates, the year, 2020, 2021, for the activity list. Minor change.
I had one job and what, what, what page was that?
Page 24, the very last one where you have the year's school activity list. Just change the school year, right below the title.
All right, we'll get her done.
Not a big deal.
All right, anything? All right.
That's from two years ago, actually, isn't it?
Yeah, we, we missed it last year.
All right, hearing nothing else, we will start with Sandy. Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Now, moving to upcoming dates, we discussed briefly, we really didn't discuss, this is when we're going to discuss it. Monday, August 3, 2020, a work session to talk about this, to further dive into the survey. Obviously, it'd probably be via Zoom as usual. It will be via Zoom and
Seven o'clock would work for me.
Seven o'clock would work? Okay.
That works for me, too.
Okay, works for everybody else at seven. Sandy, Jamie.
I'm going to interrupt you, Jill.
Yeah.
Could we do in, in, in the face-to-face meeting for this?
In person?
We can have up to 10. And we would, we would spread out and we could wear masks and give her six feet. But I just think there's, I think you'd like to just, this is a big survey we got back, a lot of information. I just think you'd have a better discussion unless I'm just old school, I don't know.
Well, we could do that, but also have it available via Zoom.
Yes, it would be by Zoom, yes.
For the public, I mean, you know, because obviously we have to keep them in the loop.
Yep, you're right.
And anybody who wouldn't feel comfortable meeting in person could do Zoom.
Okay, we can visit about that, you're correct. We do it by Zoom.
But I mean, we can, we can have people here as well. I'm just saying that we have to also have a Zoom option, so.
Good, thank you.
Add that, you know, it would be just board members that are in person, because if they could only be 10, that's putting us right at 10 with Mr. Bransoy, Mr. Menton, and Mr. Benson.
Yeah, so it'd be, 10 would be all we could have. We, the call would be here, but we would have to do it by Zoom.
Yeah.
In person and in Zoom.
Yes.
So, okay, but seven o'clock, looks like it would be an okay time. So let's, let's plan on that and we'll take care of the arrangements and let people know. August 24, 2020, school board meeting. And I think we'll just keep that via Zoom at this point at seven o'clock as per usual. So unless something changes before then, I think that's what we'll do. So with that, I would really like a motion to adjourn.
So, more Boleen.
Second, Sandy Benson, so she can get back to painting.
Yeah.
All right, and with that, we'll just do our little roll call here. We'll start with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Sandy. And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries at 8:23 PM. Thank you all so very much for sharing this time with us and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
See ya, bye.